Paul, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
It's very faint. Something might be covering your microphone?
Paul, it might just be the volume. I think I heard you a little bit, but it was really faint.
I've got my volume turned way up. Is that better?
More.
Exactly. It's at 100%. I can't go more.
Uh oh, okay.
I will try to speak loudly. Is that better? This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the state of California executive orders regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Live stream and Zoom is being utilized for this meeting. In case of technical issues, meetings will be uploaded to the city website as soon as possible after this meeting. We will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Planning Commission members and staff are participating from remote locations, practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meetings by use of Zoom as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the city council may do so during public comment or may comment on agenda, I'm sorry, the planning commission, may comment on items during the discussion of each item. I must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening, or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind, or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups, will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not abuse this new way to provide public comment. So, first item business, can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair Fritz. I will start with Commissioner Fernandez.
Here.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Here.
Commissioner Lindenbusch.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
And Chair Fritz.
Here.
And Commissioner Dowd is absent tonight.
Okay. Next item is to approve minutes. April 13th. Does anyone have any? Ever? Go ahead.
Yeah, on page four. Under my comments there. It says another update, which we cannot give too much detail on because it's kind of up in the air, but Commissioner Ottinger, it should be Commissioner Ottinger and I met with.
Do you have anything else? Is that it?
Let's see. I think that's it.
Anyone else have any changes? I had one clarification on page nine. So the sentence, our Chair Fritz, which Commissioner Fernandez can attest to, will work closely together to make sure, I think it should be, I think this is you, Carrie, it should be like working with, you know, Commissioner Fritz and I, or something like that.
I also sent in a minor edit.
Sorry, yeah, thank you, Chair Fritz. I can clarify the verbiage on that.
All right. No one else have any additions or changes? Do I have a motion?
I move the minute says edited.
A second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Anything else?
I can do a roll call vote. Commissioner Lindenbusch.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Aye.
And Chair Fritz.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will hear from members of the public that wish to speak on items not on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to speak to something regarding the planning commission item of business, please either wait in the screen or raise your hand virtually and Carrie will recognize you.
Right, and you can also, if you can't do either of those, you can use the chat. I am the, there's two Carrie's, I believe, but I'm the one that's the co-host and I'll see that in the message. Okay, I do not see any comments and we did not receive any this last couple of weeks for items via email either, Chair Fritz.
Okay, thank you. Item five is statements of conflicts of interest. Seeing none. We'll move on to our first informational report, which is the Complete Streets Project Checklist Resolution.
Thank you, Chair Fritz, and our city engineer, Joe Gaffney, will be presenting this item. But just as a quick overview, the planning commission serves as the advisor, the body that hears whenever we have various items that need to be approved for MTC or ABAG or Caltrans related to bicycle, pedestrian, transit matters, where it's not funding related, but it's related to the physical components of those. And with that, I will hand it off to Joe Gaffney.
Okay, thank you. Well, excuse me. Planning Commission members, this is the first time I've appeared before you, and so it's kind of apropos that it be via Zoom. It makes things easier for me. The item tonight is the Complete Streets Checklist, which is a component of the grant program overseen by Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC. And I'm going to rattle off a bunch of acronyms, and so if you have any questions, wave your hand. But in transportation, we live and die on acronyms. So the current grant program is One Bay Area Government, OABAG. And this is Phase Two of OABAG, so we refer to it as OABAG II. And the project that we submitted for funding under OABAG II was the sidewalk ramps downtown, not in the downtown core, but along the 116 corridor, and then also two crosswalks on Bodega Avenue, Bodega Florence and Bodega Robinson. First little background on the project. The city started a project in 2016 to stripe bike lanes on 116 from the north city limits to the south city limits. And we had the project designed and we were working with Caltrans on an encroachment permit for that when we learned that Caltrans was simultaneously planning an overlay project for 116. Well, an overlay project wipes out all the striping, and so why bother lay down your bike lane striping if Caltrans was going to come right along and coat it all with asphalt? And Caltrans was only going to put back the existing striping, where we were going to move some things around to make the bike lanes fit. So we made a deal with Caltrans so that they would install our bicycle lane striping after they did their overlay. And that's the striping that you see out there now with the green bicycle lanes. You'll also notice it in front of Palm Drive Hospital, where it used to be two lanes, now it's only one. That was the only way we could squeeze a bike lane in there and still save the parking. So Caltrans agreed to do the bike lanes, but in exchange, apparently Caltrans forgot that when they do a major overlay project like this, they also have to do the sidewalk access ramps. That's an ADA requirement. If you do a substantial upgrade to the street, then you have to upgrade all the sidewalk ramps. Caltrans didn't have the money to do that. So the deal that my predecessor, Henry Micus, worked out with Caltrans was that if they would install our striping, we would come back after that and install the sidewalk ramps. So we had the sidewalk ramps designed in 2018, 2019, and marched it all the way through the Caltrans encroachment permit process. And then we went out to bid in the fall of 2019. And the bids came back and they were over budget. So I was in the process of negotiating with the low bidder to get the project down to fit within the city's budget. And I almost had it there and then COVID hit and everything got shut down. So the project got put on the shelf. So now that the OABAG II grant comes along and one of the primary tenets of the OABAG II is that they want projects that can be implemented quickly. Well, we've got fully designed plans. We've got the encroachment permit that I'm renewing right now. And so we submitted these plans for OABAG II funding. And I don't know if Carrie's brought you up to speed on this. We didn't make it in the first cut. We're asking for about $475,000. We didn't quite make it. The Cattati missed out on their project, Sebastopol missed out on their project, although there is talk about some supplemental funding. So we still stand a chance of getting funded for this project this year and going out to construction probably this summer or late this fall. So while our project was sitting on the shelf, MTC came up with this other qualification called the Complete Streets. And what Complete Streets says is that whenever you're doing a street project, you also have to consider bicycles and pedestrians, not just cars. That's a big impact for the cities that are planning basically street projects. It wasn't such a big impact ours because we're doing sidewalk ramps, and that's all about pedestrians. So we submitted the projects on the Complete Streets checklist, and that's a checklist that you do online and then submit online. But then we learned that the checklist itself, not the individual checklists for the intersections, but the checklist itself has to be approved by the local bicycle path advisory committee. Well, like Carrie said, Sebastopol doesn't have a bicycle path advisory committee. The planning commission fills that role. So that's why we're bringing this issue to you tonight. In the agenda item, you can look over the list of locations. There's one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, 10 locations. Eight of them on State Route 16, that's Grabstein Highway and North Main Street. And then two of them on Bodega Avenue. The ones on State Route 116, those will be sidewalk ramp improvements of varying complexity. Some of them have to do a lot of extra work moving storm drain and utilities around to get the bike, to get the sidewalk ramp to fit. But those will be pretty straightforward. And then the two on Bodega Avenue, Bodega in Florence and Bodega in Robinson, those will be the updated crosswalks that we've been installing lately, where there's a pedestrian activated flashing sign. And then we also upgrade the crosswalk markings on the street to make the crosswalk more apparent to the driver. So these, all of these locations have been engineered and they are sitting on a shelf, hoping that we get this OABAG II funding. But in the meantime, we got to address the Complete Streets checklist. And I'll walk you through some of the items. You've got a copy, you've got a blank copy of the Complete Streets checklist in your agenda report, where you list the project name, the description, the county, the location, the contact name, all of the usual boilerplate. But then it gets into the project area, what bicycle and pedestrian accommodations are currently included. And just to give us some context, I'm going to go through the checklist for the State Route 116 at Hurwood Avenue. You're familiar with that. That one's up at the north end of town, right across the street from the Rubik Shopping Center. So question 1A, what bicycle and pedestrian accommodations are currently included? Well, we currently have Class 2 bicycle lanes. We have sidewalks on both sides of the street. We have marked crosswalks. We have painted conflict zones. That's basically the signalized intersection. We have the traffic signal. And we have the signal activated push buttons. So please indicate the needed pedestrian, bicycle, or transit improvements. I'm on here now to question 1C. Well, what's deficient up there at Hurwood Avenue is the sidewalk ramps. Those ramps are about, I'd say, 15, 20 years old and ADA standards get upgraded regularly. So anytime you touch something, you have to bring it up to date to the current standards. So we're basically going to rip out the ramps that are there and rebuild them with brand new ramps. Question 1D, please describe the overall context. The intersection is signalized. State Route 116 has two through lanes with a two-way left turn lane and bike lanes, 48 foot wide with on-street parking. The other two legs of the intersection are Hurwood Avenue on the north side and a shopping center entrance on the south side. Hurwood has one travel lane in each direction. So basically, you're just building a context for the location so that they can understand what we have to work with. And question 1E, what existing challenges could the proposed project improve for bicycle, pedestrian, or transit travel? Well, the existing challenges, the existing ramps don't meet current ADA standards. And that's our proposal is to upgrade the ramps so that they will all meet current ADA standards. I think we also have to move some of the traffic signal around because the pedestrian push button can't be more than four feet away from the top of the sidewalk ramps. And I think that we have to move that around. I can't remember on that one. Question two gets into demand. What trip generators are in the vicinity of the proposed project? Well, we have the shopping areas on the south side of 116. And then we have the new charter school on the north side of 116 down past O'Reilly. But that's increasing bicycle and pedestrian traffic through this intersection. We've already seen the increase. And then we skip through to question number three. Have you considered collisions involving bicyclists and pedestrians? No, we didn't consider them. We checked with them and we didn't have any record of any collisions between vehicles and bicycle and pedestrians at this location. Question 4A, do any adopted plans call for the development of bicycle or pedestrian facilities on crossing or adjacent to the proposed facility? Well, our general plan shows in the circulation element shows bicycle lanes. And then the general plan language talks about the inclusion of bicycle lanes. I included a couple of those paragraphs in the staff report. Moving right along here. Is the proposed project consistent with these plans? Yes. We meet all the bullet points in the general plan and the bicycle plan. Question 5A, do any local statewide or federal policies call for incorporating bicycle and/or pedestrian facilities into this project? Yes, the American Disability Act Accessibility Guidelines, or we call them ADAG, says that to the highest extent possible, bicycle and pedestrian facilities have to be included in street projects. And so we are meeting those guidelines with this proposed project. And question 5B, does, I'm sorry, this is mislabeled, 5B, does this project include a bicycle or pedestrian facility? Which applicable design guidelines? Well, again, we're following ADAG as far as sidewalk ramp parameters and also bicycle lanes. We're using a minimum of five foot on bicycle lanes. And then you've seen that in many places, we've striped an additional two-foot buffer between the travel lane and the bicycle lane, wherever we have the width for it. We don't always have the width for that, though. Question 6A, what comments have been made regarding bicycle and pedestrian accommodations at BPAC stakeholder or public meetings at which proposed project has been discussed? Well, I don't know that the sidewalk ramp project came before the planning commission back in 2016. At that time, the planning director, Kenyon Webster, was able to give us an environmental document, a cat X for it, which filled the Caltrans encroachment permit requirements. We had to have state-level environmental document. Other than that, the project fits the parameters that are in the general plan. There was also a I forget, not Safe Road School, Street Smart project back in 2014, 2015, where a citizens group in Sebastopol made a list of intersections that needed crosswalk and sidewalk ramp upgrades and then prioritized those locations. And we've been whittling away on that list as funding allows. These are the intersections that you'll see, especially with downtown, where they'll have the landscape bulbouts and the flashing beacons on. Those are all projects that came out of the Street Smart project. And these locations here are, we're just trying to click off the last ones that are on the list. And then also, this project was presented to the city council twice, once to gain authority to start the design of the project and then again to get the authority to go out to bid. So it's been reviewed by the city council. And another part of question number six, how have you responded to comments? Well, we didn't receive any comments. Everyone was very supportive of the project, at least the people who spoke at the city council meetings. I wasn't around when they were doing the Street Smart Citizen Project Group. I've only been here since 2005, but that was done in early 2000s. Now we're on to question seven, project scope. What accommodations, if any, are included for bicycles or pedestrians in a proposed project design? Well, we're putting in sidewalk ramps. And where it's at a signalized intersection, there will be a pedestrian push button right near the ramp. And then wherever we need to, we are flaring the bicycle lanes out around the ramp so that the bicycle lanes will be continuous through the intersection. Question 8A, will the proposed project remove an existing bicycle or pedestrian facility or hinder bicycle or pedestrian? No, no, we're doing everything we can to improve bicycle and pedestrian access through the intersection. We're not removing anything. 8B, if the proposed project, well, that doesn't apply to this one. Nine, how will access for bicyclists and pedestrians be maintained during project construction? That's been a big issue on the Caltrans encroachment permit, and we went into it in detail in the construction drawings and in the specifications. The contractor will have a traffic control plan that shows how he will provide for bicycle and pedestrian access through the work zone while he's building the ramp. And remember, this is eight individual locations, so it's going to be eight little, he won't have them all torn up at once. He might have two or three of them torn up at once, but he will work to provide safe pedestrian access through there and then possibly stripe an alternate bike lane or put the bicycles with the pedestrians with sharrows. And then on to question 10. Ongoing maintenance. That'll be up to Caltrans for the ramps that are in the state right of way. And Caltrans has already agreed to this. Where we have the Street Smart crosswalks with the landscape bulbouts, we have a maintenance agreement with Caltrans that says that the city will maintain the landscape and the electronics, the push buttons and the flashers. But then Caltrans maintains everything else, the sidewalk and the curb and the asphalt. For these ramps here, these will be, these will not have the bulbouts. So this will be just regular maintenance for Caltrans. And question 10B, how will ongoing maintenance be budgeted? Well, that will just be part of the Caltrans maintenance process. They budget for these things on an annual basis. And we'll just keep pushing on Caltrans to make sure that they don't forget that Sebastopol is here. That's kind of a running issue that we have with Caltrans. We're the orphan child in Sonoma County, even though we have two major state highways bisecting our city. So are there any questions from the commissioners?
Have questions for staff? Luke, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Gaffney, and welcome to the City of Sebastopol. Really appreciated the presentation. I was curious, just beyond prior approvals, how these particular projects were selected?
The list of ramps that are on State Route 116 on the state right of way, those were the ones that were required by the state overlay project. And we volunteered to do those ramps for them in exchange for them doing the striping for us. In retrospect, I think we came out on the short end of that, but here we are with eight intersections in the state right of way. The other two intersections were the ones that were selected by the traffic engineer after he did a traffic corridor safety study on Bodega Avenue. These two particular intersections, Bodega Florence and Bodega Robinson, were identified as two more intersections that are needing crosswalk improvements.
Thank you. Was there any reason that there weren't any ADA ramps selected for improvement on Bodega Avenue?
The crosswalk, proposed crosswalk locations at Bodega Florence and Bodega Robinson do not rise to the level that would require ADA improvements. And the short version is budget, budget, budget. ADA ramps cost anywhere from $5,000 to $12,000 apiece. And if we continue to add ADA ramps, it pushes the project out of reach.
Okay, thank you. I mostly ask because I see some of these selections on 116 that I fully support the inclusion of ADA ramps, but there are some notable exceptions, in particular on the western end of the Bodega corridor, that have completely awful, you know, just sidewalks that are coming foot, foot and a half up from grade, completely inaccessible, portions of pavement completely pushed up. I'm thinking in particular about the northwest corner of Virginia and Bodega and the complete lack of connectivity between, in particular, the stretch of Bodega from Robinson moving west all the way to Regal South. So I raised this question because I am the only commissioner, to my knowledge, who lives on the west side. There are no city council members who live on the west side. And there is a complete chronic disinvestment in safe streets in Bodega Avenue on the west side. It has resulted in the death of my neighbor here in the Valley View neighborhood. And this is in large part the reason why I joined the planning commission. So it is disappointing, I have to say frankly, to see, you know, eight projects included on 116 that really, I don't think rise to the level of need that some other areas of the city have. So I just want to say, these pedestrian crossing enhancements are hugely important. The one at Regal South I know has, if it were there before, it might have saved a life. So I can't underscore enough the importance of these. And I just want to ask that question because I think that if we're not having a really robust public process in terms of determining where the greatest need is, I just, I want to see more here, just in terms of how we're coming to this determination.
Let me respond to that with two points. First of all, the whole idea behind OABAG II, the funding program. First of all, the whole idea behind OBAG II, the funding program, is that you have to have projects that are ready to go. And the sidewalk ramps on Bodega would require a design process, which we haven't even started yet. Also, you may or may not be aware that the city is starting up a project to rebuild the paving on Bodega Avenue from High Street out to Pleasant Hill Road. And when we do that, we're going to be looking at sidewalk ramps along the way, and then also sidewalk gaps. You pointed out that one at Bodega in Virginia, where it's separated from the street with a handrail. There's two major trees there, and that's why the sidewalk got built up there. So we're going to have to assess if there is a way to get the sidewalk down to street grade in there without doing damage to the trees. The other two sidewalk gaps, the one at the proposed Woodbridge project apartments and the proposed Huntley Square project, they are going to build their portion of the sidewalk. And Huntley Square also has to finish out the street widening. So we are moving ahead on Bodega Avenue. That's on a separate funding track. We are just now starting up the design on that. We hope to qualify for funding on that by early next year and possibly go out to bid next summer, next fall, and then construction on that. Because it's such a complicated project, especially with traffic control, that one's going to take a while. I'd say more than a year. It'll be, it'll be exciting. There'll be many times when you will curse the traffic engineer, but that's the only way you can get things done like this done.
Thank you very much for that response. I appreciate it.
Anyone else have a question? Everett, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Joe, for your detailed information. Appreciate that. I just was wondering when the, I know this looks like foul ramps and crosswalks improvements and so forth. But I also noticed like on some of the crosswalks, the lighting that are there, the cars can kind of see them, but when you're a pedestrian trying to cross, you have no idea. You can't see what lights, if the light's on or not. And I don't know if that's something that is addressed with any new lighting going on, you know, to see, for a pedestrian to be able to see that the lights have been activated and cross. That makes sense.
Well, we're including it in the new projects. And Public Works, as funding allows, is going back around to retrofit some of the existing crosswalks. There's two techniques that we can use. The first one is the push button that talks to you. You've seen those before, where you come up, you hit the push button, and it says, wait, wait, wait. And then it says the sidewalk, the crossing signal is on. Yeah, those are programmable. The one at Bodega and Nelson, the hawk signal there, that was the first one that we tried that on. And that was very successful. So we're trying to go around and retrofit intersections with either the talking pedestrian buttons. Another fix that we thought of is that on the same pole that has the flashing signal, for instance, you're standing there at the ramp and you hit the button, and you're looking across the street, across the street from you is a pole that's got a flashing signal on it. We're looking at installing a flashing LED light that faces the ramp, so that you'll have a visual indication that the sign is on. We have to be really cautious with this, though, because too many people, and you see it all the time out in front of Whole Foods and Community Market, they push the button and they figure they got the right away. They just step right out.
Yeah.
We have to caution the people that even if the signs are flashing, even if the lights are blinking, it's still up to the pedestrian to make sure that it's safe to cross. And so it's a difficult parameter to include in a design to try to provide something safe without giving the pedestrian too much of an illusion that they have the right away.
Yeah, maybe even some simple signage might, might help, just kind of as a reminder. Because you're absolutely right, you know, people start crossing over and you have to look at the car coming, but also the car behind that one to make sure that it's stopping. So, but thank you for that.
Yeah, we've tried it with, with the talking push buttons. Says, watch incoming traffic or watch for cross traffic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I just have one question. So basically, we're approving this resolution that says that you're, the checklist is good for all of these locations and the application's ready to submit.
That's correct.
All right, seems pretty straightforward. If there's no more questions of staff, I will open this up for public comment. Is any members of the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Please make yourself known. You have three minutes to speak.
I'm sure Fitz did not see anyone in the chat or raising their hands or handing themselves. So it looks like we do not have public comment. And I did not receive any at the planning department via email for this item. Joe, did you receive any via email?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any further questions or discussion items, or do I have, hear a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve by resolution the MTC Complete Streets checklist.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Linda Kelly.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing that, I will ask for a vote.
Thank you, Chair Fitz. Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Vennan Bush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Andre. And Chair Fitz.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
All right, so our next item is our presentation from Burbank Housing. Would you like to give us an introduction, Carrie?
Sure, so Rich Wallace is here from Burbank Housing. There you are, hi, Rich. And just as an overview, Burbank Housing has been working in the community for many, many years. And there are actually a couple of communities that they operate in Sebastopol, including the North Grounds team apartments, which is actually recently refurbished with creating actually a couple of additional accessible units, speaking of accessibility, recently. And I believe that work is completed now. Now, if you've been past it, the buildings are all a different color, the landscape has been, and the buildings have all been given the TLC that they needed. So with that, I will introduce Rich. He's going to be talking on a number of affordable housing topics, but including working with ecumenical partnerships. So thank you, Rich.
Great, thank you, Carrie, and good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having me and giving me the opportunity to put together a variety of things to talk about. It sounds like, I think I've got about a half an hour to talk, another 15 for questions. I may not take up all 30 minutes, and I certainly don't want to take too much of your time. And also to be informative and not repetitive of other presentations. So I just, I want to thank Carrie as well for, you know, kind of pointing me in some good directions as far as the housing element and the inventory from 2014. Been able to look at sites that you've identified in the community and some of the things that maybe we can talk about tonight. I also want to congratulate folks for a, you know, an inventory that was, what is it, seven years old now? And about half of the items on this list are under development. That's, that's a good sign. You picked some good sites. So I've got a couple of different PowerPoints. I'm going to kind of switch back and forth between them, not a lot, just once. And hopefully, I'll be able to do this where it'll be a full screen. See, this is, there we go. So now that, that works on mine. I don't know if it doesn't work on the screen, does it?
We can show the main slide on your next slide, Rich.
Yeah, right. How do I do that so I don't have the next slide showing? Doesn't really matter. Is that down here?
You need to start, you need to start the slideshow.
Oh, I did start slideshow. Let's see, one of these toggles down here, see all slides. And laser, zoom into the slide. More slideshow.
It might be up top under display settings. I'm not sure. I've not used this.
Oh, you're right. That, that might be. Does that work?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. Great. So I'll just jump to the first slide. So you stole a little of my thunder with Gravenstein. I just wanted to mention initially, Burbank Housing and Sebastopol go a long way back. And there are, yes, two rental projects that Burbank has done in Sebastopol. We've also done at least four additional homeownership projects, that are affordable homeownership projects. Oh, somebody just entered the waiting room. I got that. So, so Gravenstein is 60 family rentals, was built in 88 and renovated for the first time using the low income tax credits model in 2020 of an old tax credit project. But it was, this is the first time around. And probably next week, if not the following week, we'll be closing on our perm financing. It's been a long time coming. The project's been complete since, God, I want to say late summer, early fall, but it's, it takes a while sometimes between the time that you finish the work and you bring all the people back into the units that have had to be temporarily located and arranged for the financing, and then verify all of the tenant files. And that's one of the things that's taken us until May to finally close. So we're excited to have that done. Bodega Hills is a bit older of a property, 1997, and smaller as well. But it's also combined in a cluster with Bodega Avenue Town Homes, both the ones that were built in 1993, and additional 23 that were built in 1988. Holly Hawk is another affordable homeownership project, and that's the most recent homeownership project done in Sebastopol for Burbank. In Sequoia Village, which are 20 affordable homeownership projects, homeownership units built in 2019. I'm sorry, 2009. Now I get to switch over to the other one, so I'm going to stop sharing this for a moment and bring up this and see if I can get this right. And go to the display settings. Right, no, your screen has the full one. Mine has the next slide. So this is a case study of, in Napa, that opened in 20, late 2019. So we'll use that as kind of a case study. We're asked to provide some case studies, but also an overview of tax credits, which everyone can always use a refresher on. There's no end to the minutia and details, which we're not going to get into, but we are going to get a good overview. Hopefully, some of you know how they work and some maybe need a refresher. So Burbank Housing has been around for 41 years now. We are now serving almost 10,000 residents across a portfolio of 3,200 units. So the federal low income tax credit program has been around since 1986. It offers tax incentives for private investment in affordable housing. Most of the investors in affordable housing are banks, pension funds, insurance companies. Used to be that individuals were able to invest in tax credits, but it's really become more of these large entities. And the tax credit program is quite a bipartisan program because it does have the interest of the business sector that sees this as an advantageous way to both, for banks that need to do a decent amount for the community, but also get good returns on their investments. So the two types of tax credits, we all call them 4% and 9% tax credits. Until this last year, the 4% tax credit wasn't really a 4% tax credit. It was like a 3.1% tax credit. But as of December of the 2020, now we have a 9% fixed rate and a 4% fixed rate tax credit. It's going to make things a lot easier. There's no guessing from year to year as to what the rate's going to be. The 4% tax credits cover about 30% of the development costs. These are just rules of thumb. They are in quite a bit greater supply than the 9% tax credits. But they've also very recently become incredibly, if you go back about two years, year and a half, 4% tax credits combined with tax exempt bonds were almost a given for an affordable housing project. If it met the general ramifications of what, what is required for affordable housing, they would get the tax credits along with the bonds. Then when the bonds became oversubscribed at the state level, that meant that the 4% tax credits themselves were also going to be much more competitive. And because of the high demand, I mean, we were way under housed in the state of California for purposes of affordable housing, as well as middle market housing. There, in the last round of 4% tax credits, there were at least three projects for everyone that got funded. And many, many developers, affordable and market rate developers, put an incredible amount of time and money into making these projects feasible to the point where they can go in for credits. And yet they're waiting for this to open back up and hopefully make, make the 4% tax credit non-competitive and allow projects to move forward. The 9% tax credits have always been competitive. They have a higher level of scoring. They're very, one of the development costs. And they generally don't require as many other sources to make them work. Whereas the 4%, you've got to put together a whole package of different sources, including local funding and state funding. And that's the next slide. So if you looked at a typical project, this would be probably more likely a 4% project where the federal tax credit would come in for a little less than half, maybe 40% of the project. The state programs with MHP, multifamily housing program, No Place Like Home, which is serving formerly homeless. All these different state programs are part of the state housing funds that, especially for nonprofits, we look to those sources to help make projects pencil. They also have some disadvantages in that it triggers prevailing wage, which increases costs. And they are also very competitive. So the state tax credits have been another source recently for equity for projects of the entire, 100% of funding, only 9% comes from private banks, rough private debt. And then various other programs, local funds are a very important piece. It's 4% of the total. But sometimes that, that local source is the make or break. It's the gap that is still there when the project is trying to move forward. And when we talk about local funds, we're talking about not just the municipalities, but the county and other programs that but the county and other programs that may come from local sources. Federal Home Loan Bank is the AHP program, which is also available. So why do tax credits matter? They, they, they help fund a vast majority of affordable housing projects in California. It used to be, you know, when tax credits started back in 86, there were a lot of HUD, HUD programs. HUD had a lot of money that, that funded projects. And even more recently, you had redevelopment in the state that was funding a lot of variety of projects, including projects in Sebastopol. Now it's tax credits, tax credits, tax credits. And, and, and very hard to make, you know, there, you can swap out tax credits for something else. If there's a resource that can, can help fund the difference. I think there's an effort on the part of the state right now to, to, to look at ways to, to move past tax credits and, and keep projects moving forward. But it's hard. So tax credit is different than a tax deduction. It's a dollar for dollar reduction of taxes owed. So low income tax credits, what we're talking about, but there's others, including new markets tax credits. I've got a lot of experience with that, with its community development based. So if you're looking at trying to fund charter school, those are tapping into things like New Markets Tax Credits. And that just got an extension of five years. Very exciting. And then other smaller tax credits that, that help projects move forward. So section 42, the federal tax credit specifically has to be for rental housing. It's not transient. It's permanent housing and it's for residents at 60% AMI, average median income or less. On this slide, it talks about 80% for income averaging, which means that you can have some percentage of the residents meeting as long as it averages out to be 60% or less. But the IRS has come out with new guidance that is making that more difficult and it may in fact go away. So income averaging has only been around for a couple of years and it may not be around in the future. For the 9% program, which is mostly new construction, you have to fit into one of the main categories, large families, senior housing, special needs, which includes SROs that also includes formerly homeless and at risk, which are projects that are, maybe they were funded by HUD and now they're losing that status. So if that is the case, even if they don't meet any of these categories, they may be eligible for tax credits. In eligible projects, owner occupied, employer provided house. If they're not individual leases, if they're group homes, they wouldn't, they wouldn't comply. Student housing doesn't usually comply. So dormitories, mobile home parks wouldn't fit the, the picture either. When we look at Sonoma County, we want to know what the average incomes are for, for residents. I mean, it's going to vary from town to town, what the people in that town earn. But we use the TCAC category, which goes by the entire county. So doesn't matter where you live in the county. These are the, this is the criteria. 30% of median income, which is extremely low income. That for a family of four would be 35,000 a year, 50% a median would be 48,000 and 60% a median would be 60,000. Those are brand new numbers that just came out like last week for 2020. So you set rents on 30 persons per bedroom. I can tell you in, in many developments, not necessarily well-run affordable housing projects, but in projects that may not be so well-run or well-monitored, you might find two or three people per bedroom. I've been involved in a project in the city of San Francisco in which they had hammocks in the living room dangling from one side to the other, where I mean, they were just finding any space in the apartment for people. The other criteria is that it has to be a decent amount below market. So even if market rents in that particular neighborhood aren't, aren't that high, this still has to be, in order for investors to feel comfortable with the project, they want to make sure that it's not going to have vacancies. And the only way to make sure that it's not going to be vacant is that it's going to be well below the market. So 20% or more is really a better number to work from. Multiple funding sources, they all have to meet the affordability will be the one that's adhered to if they overlap. And now we're going to take a closer look at Stoddard. These are all pictures of Stoddard at various angles. It's 50 units at or below 30 to 60% of average median income. Burbank signed an agreement with the Gasser Foundation for the land in 2017 and the project was approved and funded within two and a half years using the 9% tax credits, which is relatively fast to get everything entitled and approved and, and awarded funds. Also, you see some charging points, even affordable housing projects are, they're solar friendly and EV friendly and, and we're trying to incentivize and a number, I think there's a number of rebate programs to support low-income people using hybrids and electric cars. This was a particularly interesting part of Stoddard is that it, it's an expensive building. It needed a lot of funding and 9% allocation of tax credits. Gasser Foundation provided funding as well as the land, the city and the county of Napa, other philanthropic groups and a construction lender, a permanent lender and an investor in Wells Fargo. And project was completed two and a half years from, from 2017 and completed in 2019. So now I'm going to switch back. See, please wait, not, not that long. Now, why isn't it going? Okay. Here we go. So some of you may recognize this is 3575 Mendocino, the former prison mobile home park in Santa Rosa. This site is 13.3 acres that is not yet underway, but will be probably later this year. It's gotten, received all of its entitlements. What you're looking at is the fully built out site of which only a portion of the site will be developed by Burbank, although Burbank did all of the entitlements for the entire site. The rest of it will be developed by a yet to be determined market rate developer. But the street network, the infrastructure, all of the planning, the removal of the mobile homes and, and working payments out with the residents who were displied Burbank housing. This site, this portion is the 162 unit senior housing component that is a joint development of Burbank Housing and the related companies, which is a for-profit national affordable housing developer that is teaming up with us to make this happen. What the, the first phase, which received disaster tax credits in late 2020, will be funding the first 90 units, I want to say, 94 units, excuse me, of, of the development, but it'll be two or three phases before it gets completely built. Caritas Homes is one that I'm going to talk about a little bit more tonight because it is a collaborative effort between Burbank and Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities of Santa Rosa owns the land and is providing a ground lease for the development of two phases of housing for Caritas Homes, which is using the No Place Like Home funding source to provide housing for formerly homeless for just under 50% of buildings, units. The rest will be family housing and strong. And Carita, the Catholic Charities is developing their new headquarters and a building called Caritas Center on the other side of this property. This is very close, close to downtown, close to smart transit. So it, it allowed the kind of density that you're seeing here that wouldn't necessarily be true if it were in less of a transit-friendly location. But Care will be the transitional housing component who will also have a health center and navigation center for, for the area. Heritage House in Valverde is another project that is using No Place Like Home. That is in Napa and that's a combination of Heritage House being a former and, and closed down assisted living facility that's been vacant for about 10 years or longer. And Valverde is a new construction 24-unit building that will be built next to it. Combine the two properties will be, that will be 90. And Petaluma River Place is another project that is applied for No Place Like Home funds, not for 50% of the units, but for about 30% of the units. We're also looking at a program for farm workers. The location in Petaluma is very close to 116 that would lead into the Sonoma Valley as well as access to the dairy farms and other aspects, other components of Petaluma. So this sits on the Petaluma River at the south end of town. Crossroads Apartments, I wanted to show this. This is one of, this opened in 2018 in Santa Rosa. But this is probably more compatible with sites, except for say a downtown site of Sebastopol. This is, this one is probably more sympathetic with the design and the feel of Sebastopol. So I wanted to show both the layout. It's a, it's a beautiful site in terms of the landscaping, a lot of drought tolerant landscaping on the properties. They're just two-story buildings, a lot of play areas for the kids. But still close to transportation and schools. So that's 79 units. And what we can go with that, we have a list of some of the properties. So Burbank's process for assessing and evaluating sites and, and looking at pre-development for projects, first of all, obviously is identifying a site, but sometimes it's a site that's brought to us through our partnerships or relationships. And quite often, hint, hint, municipalities that, you know, sometimes municipalities feel necessary to do RFQ or RFP for projects, but sometimes, you know, they are not constrained by funding sources. That happened in one of the other communities where they basically pointed to some properties that were going on the market for, they, they were somewhat, somewhat dilapidated, but the demand that they would bring to market rate developers to convert them into high-rent second homes or there, there was a definite interest to move quickly to secure that site, those, those properties and work with us on putting them together for a new development. And that, that project is moving forward. So typically the sites, the land sites are vacant, but not always. Sometimes, sometimes they have to be demolished. And sometimes it's an assemblage where it's a two or three parcels that are combined. I think, I think in one of yours, I'm familiar with the Woodmark project. And I think that looks like that was an assemblage of a couple of different parcels if I saw the addresses on here. So sometimes just going after a listing isn't the best way to creatively acquire property. Sometimes it's quietly putting together a few different parcels to do a development. We're also seeing a number of developers come to us or come to the cities looking for an inclusionary partner for their projects in order to meet the inclusionary requirements. Some of the communities in Sonoma County require it to be onsite. Others allow an in-lu fee instead. And frankly, we, we, we kind of like the in-lu fees because it allows us to, to do a site the way we like it, accessing the funds directly rather than working with them on site. I, I like to do an inclusionary project on a developer's site if the site is large enough to allow for a completely separate parcel. Otherwise, they're asked to being, to provide affordable housing scattered throughout their project or on a component of the project. And it's, it's challenging to make the architecture work for both sides. It just doesn't, the, the, the nature of tax credits makes it more complicated. So sometimes that's, so again, assess the feasibility and funding, obviously zoning, but also what, what the plan commission can support in terms of density, available transit and making sure that the property can be bought right and, and make financial sense. And once we see that and we, we, we take a look at what's the appropriate population? Is this a family-friendly location? Is this near schools? Does it make sense there? Or is it more close to hospitals and banks and, and, and things that seniors may like? So, or, or is it near services that, you know, we're seeing more and more projects that are serving at least a component of the, the buildings for, for formerly homeless? So so those are, those are things to look at. And then also making sure that we make sure that this site makes sense. There are often constraints that aren't evident from the get-go, whether it's through soil reports, geotech, wetlands, other things that may come up in the process of evaluating a site. If it's reasonable and if you're ready to move into a contract, we certainly want 30 to 90 days, depending on, on the nature of the site of real due diligence. And then also the nature of affordable housing is that we prefer to have a patient seller who will allow us to go through that process of accessing tax credits. That doesn't mean that we ask them to allow us to do this for free, but maybe there's some modest extension fees that can be used as we get closer and closer to certainty. So moving into the faith-based properties and affordable housing, wanted to talk first about SB 899 in particular, because that's really, that was a exciting opportunity last year when that was being proposed, which it specifically was calling out church-owned or faith-based properties as well as, at one point it was nonprofit hospitals and higher institutions. If they had surplus land, they, those could be eligible for meeting the SB 899 need, which is using a streamlined process. You would avoid SEQA. using a streamlined process, you would avoid sequo. But I think, you know, there's, there's, you know, some trade-offs with you know, with streamlining and I understand that with municipalities that want to make sure that a good quality project gets built there. And I think more communities are looking at having more objective design criteria, so there's minimal risk of projects moving forward without meeting some of those standards. We completed a SB thirty-five process recently that was before there was objective criteria. But we also worked closely with the, with the city and I don't think there were any significant issues there. I, I also understand that, you know, some of the programs do kind of push the envelope a little bit on, on density where maybe it shouldn't be. So I, I, I think that the goal here is to have nonprofits in particular and cities work on the affordable housing set aside, most of our projects are a hundred percent affordable. And we're not going to get support for getting tax credits if it's a poorly planned project, if it doesn't meet sustainability needs, energy efficiency, high standards of construction. And 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 what we look at is the density bonus is a benefit that doesn't necessarily mean that you, you double or triple the size of the project. It's a hundred and thirty percent of what was already zoned. But but can make a huge difference, especially when doing affordable housing, we're competing with market rate developers who are willing to pay more than we can afford. So there are issues there. But there's also a roadblock that stopped a SB eight ninety-nine from happening and is threatening any number of legislative activities going on right now, which is the unions and they are pushing for a skilled and trained workforce is the language, which, which goes well above and beyond prevailing wage, which is something that we're kind of expecting these days. The nonprofits aren't surprised to have prevailing wage in projects because it's tied to most of the funding that we get from the state. But to contractors does limit the, the, the pool of potential available contractors and and those that are not necessarily local may be charging higher rates. So in, in many ways, it's going to negatively impact affordable housing. Washington State passed in twenty nineteen, similar legislation did not have the same issues. And they've produced two collaborative projects through one organization, there may be others, I just was able to find out about these, one that included permanent supportive housing and another that had an attached service center and food bank. And that was a collaborative effort between a church and an affordable housing developer. So I think there's a lot of ways to find you know, synergy between the needs and interests of churches and synagogues and those affordable housing developers. We'll jump into that a little bit more. So development is often an alien process to churches and synagogues that can seem risky and, and even partnerships are, are kind of awkward and puzzling for them, especially if they don't know who they're working with, just, just being a nonprofit isn't enough, they, they have to get a comfort level. Tax credits are confusing for the best of us. And, and they're daunting for a church to understand if they're going to be turning over land or partnering with a, a tax credit investor. There are ways to do this where like, like with Catholic charities at Caritas, a ground lease might be something in which they maintain a certain amount of control, but it still is, is giving over land. I also think this is, you know, the ship is coming in with paying market rate values for land and, and being able to get a cash flow return on top of that, if you're a partner. That is, that, that, that just gets in the way of being able to produce good affordable housing. And the timeline is long and complicated and can conclude a may be a nasty process with neighbors if they, if the density isn't what they want, and sometimes they don't want any density. So it, it's never fun to, to work in a, in a community with competing interests that have a voice. But in the end, they still may see that the rewards outweigh the risks. We've seen more situations where the ecumenical organization just flat out sells the land and and doesn't stay involved, but others do see benefits and if there are compatible new uses that may be helped, the, the financing may be helping with childcare or healthcare, things like that. So if we were to do something with a, a faith-based organization, you know, first things first is get to know them, so your goals are aligned. And discuss both the monetary and non-monetary benefits, so some of that might be intergenerational living and, and things that the, the church finds of value, the, the food bank for one that was, was helpful. I mean, there can be any number of things that aren't directly related to a dollar figure that can work. An important early on is to create a set of responsibilities, who's doing what? Who's in the lead? Who, who is simply in a support role but has no direct say? And where do you need both to sign off on things to move forward? Get clear where, where we're looking at on this site. And what the uses might be and who's providing the finances at what stage? When you get some of that general idea in as quickly as possible, come to meet with city planning or a city manager or both, probably not yet city council or anything like that, but but just to get a handle on, are we, are we all working in the right direction? And then very quickly, get an MOU together. It's extremely helpful, even if it's non-binding, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. In Sebastopol, these two properties were identified in the housing element in the inventory. The five hundred Robinson site was, is almost redeveloped by a church affiliate, Bull Senior Rental before redevelopment, as, as we all knew it was shut down and the funding was lost. My understanding is I, I've not approached anybody, but they seem to be using the, the property to its full extent, even though it's a, it's a, it's a couple of acres. But I'd be very interested in following up and maybe there's an opportunity there. Same thing with seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty-three covert, which is Saint Sebastian, is that right? Carrie, right? And that also was identified in the inventory, it's a great location and has six and a half acres of land and Burbank built Sequoia Village on an adjacent site back in two thousand nine. Still trying to find out if that was formerly church-owned land or just happened to be right next to that church. And then there's many other religious properties in, in and around as valuable to them and to the community. So I would look forward to walk in the streets and the, the driving the back roads and finding something that makes sense to redevelop. And open for questions.
Great, thank you very much, Rich. Kathy, I see you're raising your hand. Go ahead.
Just thank you for your presentation. I was wondering if you are currently working with any of the churches or property owners in Sebastopol right now? Or are there no opportunities at current, at the current time?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Anyone else have any questions for Rich?
Come on, Luke. I was just in a meeting with Luca yesterday, so.
I did have one really specific question, which was about the, the nine percent tax credit and eligibility for SROs being included in that. Is there any sort of particular criteria they have to meet in terms of special needs service delivery in order to get that or is, is just being kind of a, you know, microunit type development eligibility enough?
It's a good question. I mean, SROs are, you know, when I think of an SRO and developing an SRO, it almost, almost inherently is supportive housing. But I, I was involved in building two hundred and seventy unit SROs in Chicago back, you know, sometime in the last twenty years. And at that time, the SROs weren't necessarily only for homeless people, they were designed to be for service workers. What the, the last one we did was, was, you know, for hotel workers. And they didn't necessarily need the level of supportive services that these days, when we look at SROs, we think about permanent supportive housing, housing first in some of those programs. So it kind of depends on where you are and, and what, what the models are. I may, I kind of mentioned, I did some consulting work with T, TNDC before joining Burbank. And they, they have all kinds of different versions of their, their neighborhood SROs, some of them have a, you know, deep, deep permanent supportive housing model and others are very similar in that they're just serving, you know, in one of the properties that I, I was working with them on acquiring, surprising number of residents in that building were actually Twitter employees and, and, and you know, young millennials that were just needing a space for a laptop and a bed and working their fourteen-hour day weeks, fourteen-hour days. So I, I don't, I, I know that if you're looking to qualify under meeting homelessness, then there's absolutely a supportive housing component to that, so that's critical. And services are essential for all projects and there are different levels of a criteria for SROs, but I don't, you know, I, I don't think it's to the level of PSH, but it should be a high level of services.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Anyone else have a question? Glad ever.
Hi, Rich, thank you very much for taking the time to give us this information, it gives a lot to think about and perhaps some incentives. I don't know if you're familiar with some of the zoning laws and so forth, the Sebastopol, I'm just wondering, are there changes or certain considerations that should be made to maybe be more proactive to allow these types of projects or is that something that maybe as projects come along has to be looked at one by one?
I'm not sure your question is, is, should you be more proactive or?
Yeah, I mean, are, are there, are there zoning regulations that would prevent some of the projects or that perhaps changes that could help it or how do you see our zoning regulations as, as far as to be able to either help with these projects or be more complex?
You know, it's, it, it's interesting that, you know, I pointed to Crossroads, I said that there's, you know, there's a, there's a trade-off. Each community is, it, it seems to be pushing hard for, for density, transit friendly. We write on the, the smart train line, which you're not, but so, you know, so those criteria are driving some of the density needs and requirements. But high-density development is also very expensive to build. So just, you know, the, the Caritas project or which was one of the first podium projects in Sonoma County, you know, it, it can be very expensive to build high density. So we're very comfortable building three-story walk-up complexes. Maybe it's an elevator, but it isn't necessarily garage parking versus, you know, being able to use the, the, the additional land. But we, we butt up against some of the criteria that scores projects for tax credits and they want that density. So it's a constant struggle. I, I think, I think being open to higher density in the right locations is something that you could take a look at and I, I'm sure hotels and market rate developers are, are looking for kind of the same thing, but Sebastopol is still a rural rural community or is it at least considered a rural community from the standpoint of tax credits, which we like. One of the reasons why I would love to do a project in Sebastopol is because of the rural designation, like Sonoma has it, Sebastopol has it, Cloverdale, but not many others, and that has its own set aside for tax credits that that is beneficial, so Sonoma as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
And go ahead, Kathy.
SROs, that's single residential.
Single room occupancy.
Room, single room. I see something that is often used for students in areas like Carvallos where I visit frequently, where you've got maybe five master bedrooms that are joined to a common kitchen and living room and laundry facilities, and I wonder whether that works well for the people who need a single room unit. Or, or whether that's more efficient or more affordable, it seems like it could be more affordable because so many of the spaces are shared.
Sure, sure. So I think before COVID, you were seeing a whole flurry of, you know, particularly in major cities. You know, the WeWork and the WeLive models, Common, I think, is another company that was doing that, where they were developing, excuse me, apartments that had, you know, different residents who didn't necessarily know each other, sharing in a, an apartment. So it is very similar to suite-style living in dormitories. It may come back, you know, now that COVID is, is hopefully going away. But who knows? I mean, things are changing. But it's definitely something that people have been innovating and thinking about. Just like, just like cohousing was a novel idea, you know, thirty years ago or forty years ago.
I'm thinking it seems like an appropriate model for seniors because of the shared common nowadays they would have.
Sure.
With having roommates and not living alone.
Yeah, and not being isolated, absolutely. One of the things that we're very concerned about when we design buildings for formerly homeless is that they don't, you know, have this new isolation where they're living in these single units and shut off from, from the rest of, you know, the community. So it's important to have common spaces, indoor spaces and outdoor spaces for people to, to gather. It, it may or may not make sense for them to occupy units with strangers, I mean, that can get awkward. But certainly with friends and there are roommate-style the apartments that are in the affordable housing world as well, so two people can qualify and share the costs.
I have a question to sort of follow up on Kathy's question. So the, so if, you know, that kind of model, sort of like a suite sort of thing, does that fit into the, any tax credit kind of like program or could that, could that qualify for tax credits, not exactly a large family? Or a senior or just wondering how?
Yeah, I mean, if it, if it were a two-bedroom and the bedrooms were on the opposite side of the space and the kitchen and the living was in the middle, you would just be qualifying to incomes for the unit. So it could potentially work well.
I noticed that a lot of, excuse me, for stepping in, I noticed that when we walk through homes under construction, we notice that there frequently are a lot of master bedrooms in the homes, it may be a four, three bedroom.
Right, dual, dual masters, yeah.
Office off the garage with a bathroom.
Right.
Which could be a living unit with access to the kitchen. So it seems like many homes today, although they're large, are intended for more than just one family unit.
Right. And then of course, there's the ADU movement that is doing the same thing.
You know, Kathy, I'm actually working on a project right now that's kind of like that. It's a, it's a veterans housing project and each house has six bedrooms. Each bedroom has its own bathroom and kind of like a wet bar area, you know, the sink and under counter refrigerator. But then there's a larger like living room, dining room, common kitchen area. But it'll be intended for six, you know, unrelated people to kind of share housing. And then each property will also have an eight, a two bedroom ADU kind of similarly set up. So it'll be eight people living on each property, kind of sharing kind of common spaces, but also having their own space to kind of retreat to as well.
Yeah.
So, but that's true. That's a group home.
Kind of, yeah.
That, yeah, it really is a group home and that would not be a tax credit model, but there are other funding sources that can support that.
Yeah. I had a question, just to, I want to see if you could speak a little bit more. Cause I know we've had conversations in the planning commission about in lieu fees. And you kind of alluded to the fact that you like in lieu fees because you got, you guys get the fees. But we often, you know.
Yeah, we don't get, yeah, it's, it, we get, it's gap financing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, you get, yeah, when other people pay in lieu fees, that goes to the city's affordable housing fund.
Right, right.
Use that. They can give that money to you. But so I'm just, you know, because we discuss a lot, well, we want to make developers integrate and do the housing onsite. And that's kind of this push and pull as to how, how best accommodate more affordable housing. And just wanted, maybe you could speak to a little bit more to that.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a great question and I, and I think sometimes there's some rigid thinking around that, you know, trying to push a model onto market developed, market rate developers that isn't their comfort zone. And they're not, you know, they're not comfortable, they're not good managers necessarily in the same way. That it, that it's, you know, I've, I've seen more projects fall apart because of the push for below market rents in their market rate projects that, you know, creates a stigma. There's challenges with, you know, people being, you know, called out in a, in a community. So I, I think there's a, there's definitely some reasons to rethink whether making them integrated in development is the best, best angle. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, do you, you might not know this off the top of your head. I'm just wondering what kind of, do you know what kind of inclusionary fees other communities impose on developers who don't build the inclusionary?
Well, do you have a policy?
We do. I know we have.
I'm happy to talk about it.
Yeah. Cause I have, I have a breakdown. I think you're in there that I think Santa Rosa put it together for all the communities in Sonoma and they're all across the board.
Yeah. I can't remember specifically what our policy is. I know we just kind of changed our inclusionary. It's a little more flexible. We have sort of different options depending on the level of affordability as to the percent that you provide. I don't remember where we ended up with the fee, if we allow, I think we just allow a fee for a percent. You know, isn't that correct?
Yeah. So our current inclusionary housing, it used to be 20%. And I figured what level that was if that was moderate. We changed it to be 15% for moderate, or you can do 10% at low, or you can do 5% at very low. So that gives a developer an option and, you know, fewer units with a higher affordability level or more units at a more moderate. To kind of help them pencil it out. And then we, we do require, and we also increased it to, I believe it's five or more units. It used to be three units or more. So we exempted smaller projects as well as projects that are 840 square feet or less. So we exempted a bunch of stuff.
Right, right.
We, we do require, if there's a fraction of a unit, so say you owe 1.5 units, you can choose to pay the point five as the fee, or you can build CD units. I know like the Davis Townhomes, they actually, they had 1.8 and they actually chose to build two, which is great for us because we like to have the units on the ground, obviously. From the city's perspective, that, that the money you get isn't, it's, it is enough for gap financing or those types of things, but it's never enough to actually go build a unit. Our current fee is about $22 a square foot is sort of the equation of it. So you work out the average size of a unit and then if it's half a unit, then half of that times the square footage, you know, half of the, half the square footage times the fee. For the development impact fee, update that's going to council next week, but basically is going to remain the same. That's the, we've done the calculations regarding, it's basically the same, about the same.
I mean, I think, you know, if there are no projects to fund in terms of, you know, taking in lieu fees, because there's no sites, there's no, there's nothing that you can develop, then that's probably the next best thing. But to scatter the affordable units throughout a lot of small projects and not being able to create a place for, for residents. I mean, I just think that there's a, there's a reason there's affordable housing developers and developments that have a wide range of income levels of those residents and able to access all these different resources that the market rate developer is just, you know, it, it, it creates an impact on the marketplace in terms of land values that they have to. You know, sometimes projects don't move forward at all because of the inclusionary requirement. I've heard of just in Petaluma alone, you know, more projects than I can think of that have had the developer walk away because of the onsite inclusionary requirement. When we would have gladly taken that money and put it towards one of our projects or someone else's project in the community.
You also mentioned kind of, you know, sometimes you can partner with a, a market rate developer.
Correct.
Project and you'll do the affordable piece of it.
Right.
When you do that kind of thing, do you just kind of completely separate? Like do you create two lots? So you do your project on your lot, they do the project on their lot. It's not like one project and you kind of blend it somehow.
Uh, I mean, you know, it can be blended. I mean, there can be shared amenities, you know, a shared park, shared community room. It's possible.
But the building would always be separate. You wouldn't have like a mark, you would like take.
Yeah. Well, the, the reason, the reason is, yeah, that the tax credit model has a whole partnership just for itself. So there's the Bank of Americas and the Wells Fargos that are investing in, you know, a building that is in, in that way separate. And that seems to make more sense. It's just, it's kind of a legal mess when you try to, you, you can't intersperse affordable in a, a market rate and get the tax credit benefits the same way. Or you can, but the developer won't get, won't be able to sell and they won't be able to, you know, they'll be constrained in ways that they'll, won't find acceptable.
Yeah. Any other questions for Rich, my name is commissioners? I can open this up for public hearing if any member of the public has any comments. We can't have, it's not really a dialogue, but if you have a comment or a question, we can respond to your question after all public comments have been taken.
See if anyone's out there.
Anyone there?
And I do, Paul, I do have one that was through the chat window that was sent to me, so I'll just read it. With the Biden administration's declared focus on mitigating homelessness, lack of affordable housing and dramatic carbon reduction programs, can we expect serious incremental funding in these areas? Is there potential interest in an entire green, low income housing subdivisions?
Those are a lot of questions. I think, I think there is a lot of momentum in Washington that's going to hopefully help the tax credit model. It's going to help bonds. The, the infrastructure bill has a number of components in it that include items that can help affordable housing. The COVID relief act had money going towards it. So, but some of it hasn't been flowing yet. So we'll see as, as far as what's going on in Washington. And then the green aspect, you know, the, the tax credit program and all of the funding sources, they're all pushing for sustainability. And you score points for solar, you score points for, you know. I mean, we don't have an issue with drainage, green roofs and things like that. We need some rain here. But, but yeah, so all those things that everyone, I'm sure in Sebastopol cares about in terms of environmental sustainability are incorporated in many ways into the design of affordable housing.
Do you see anyone else out there, Carrie, making a motion to?
I do not. Thank you. Yeah, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Thanks, Paul.
Great. Well, close public comments. And I mean, commissioners have any other final thoughts or questions?
Linda here, I'd like to ask Rich a question.
Sure.
With the talk of commercial properties maybe not going to get tenants and maybe repurposing to housing, do you have any experience or anything you could share with us? We certainly have a few buildings, but it's not like we're a, a big enough town, but so I'll, I'll leave that question.
So adaptive reuse is a category that has some criteria for scoring that helps projects move forward. So an office building that may not be so big and wide, but, but is small enough that there is windows relatively close to each other. So bedrooms can have windows and that those would be exciting to work on. Absolutely. Do you have any in mind? It actually, it's been very, it's been very frustrating recently in that the state is kind of frowning on supporting acquisition rehab these days. We've had a tough time getting projects to move forward when it's just a residential rehab. Like the one I was talking about earlier where the, the town came to us and said, save this building from, you know, the market. So we can maintain affordability for residents. Converting residential properties takes, you know, 20% of the time and money that building from scratch does, particularly time, but also money. And you know, adaptive reuse is definitely a way around that. Although it gets expensive fast when you're dealing with codes and compatible. I mean, I've, I've been involved in historic rehabs a lot in the past. And those are really fun to work with where almost never were those old buildings residential. And they're getting converted to lofts and exciting spaces.
Rich, I want to thank you for your very, very wonderful presentation. I've been doing this a long time, 20 years between planning and city council and back to planning. But your presentation was very, very informative. Thank you very much. And hopefully we can keep working, you know, towards our goals. I've always been a real big supporter of inclusionary built onsite. So you have economic diversity and, but you know, I've come to change my mind on that. And, and because, you know, it's, it's a challenge and we've certainly, certainly have tried to go with the flair of building it on site.
Just make the site big enough that, that there's space for a separate, separate piece. That's the best thing.
And I've always been concerned that our in lieu fees compared to like Marin, which years ago was like $90, $90,000. And here it's, you know, and I know I'm mixing square footage with, you know, per unit and that's not fair. But it just seems to me that, that we might not be charging enough.
Well, I, I tend to hear, just, just from my recent experience in Sebastopol, that there, there's a lot more willingness to pay fees than to deal with having to provide onsite. And they'll pay up to do so. So you might be surprised.
Uh huh. Very good.
No, I will say there are, I'm not, there are access requirements as you go over development impact fees. There needs to be a connection between what you're charging and, you know, the, what is that gap in affordability between?
Right.
We could, you know, I'd love to say, yeah, you can buy it, but you're basically going to buy our unit.
Right. Speaking of which, I just want to make one, one quick pitch because there, I won't name the town, but there is a town that's actually considering dropping impact fees on affordable housing developments. And that would be a godsend to helping move our projects forward. We'll pay the permit fees, we'll pay the, you know, sewer and water fees. I mean, but the impact fees, that's a killer for, for affordable housing. And, and we then come back to you and the county and other places to help fund that. Because, you know, it's a, it's a million or $2 million going into a project that, you know, the, the project either doesn't get built and then you don't collect the impact fee or, you know, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a trade off.
And I just a question on that because I know our city council has heard requests for waiving or reducing fees on occasion for certain projects and they, they've certainly shown an openness to that. And that's, you know, our planning commissions, also our park commissions. So of course they're always looking at this very small park budget. Things like that too. But, you know, to me, that's actually a way where, yeah, we may not have excess land. We may have some, as we talked about in our last, you know, if there's parking lots or things like that. Although I know that's been discussed fairly recently in the past. And the concerns for the business community and the parking there, there, there's certainly stresses around that. But, you know, the city certainly does have the ability to, A, we do have both inclusionary fees as well as a commercial linkage fee. So larger commercial projects pay a fee for affordable housing too. So we do have some money for that type of gap funding. But we also obviously have the ability to, to do, just as you said, on a case by case basis, at least waive or reduce fees for projects. And I believe this is certainly done that in the past, in addition to some of the development we've been doing.
Well, just to, just as a thought, when a community waives its impact fees for affordable housing, it triggers prevailing wage. Now that might not, we might be paying prevailing wage anyway, but if that were, you know, in, in certain circumstances, we don't want to trigger it for just that purpose because we end up paying every bit as much for getting that, that waiver. If, if it were taken off altogether, it would not be a waiver and it would not trigger that kind of impact. Just FYI.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Luke.
Yeah, I just wanted to close it out with a handful of thank yous. Just thank you so much to Rich for this presentation. I think it's been really informative along with all the presentations that we've had in the series so far. And I think we'd be remiss to also not thank former Commissioner Kate Haug for pulling this together.
I was wondering where she was.
Yeah, there was, I won't go into it, but. And I also just want to thank Carrie and city staff also for communicating these presentations and being sure to get them on the website. So it was really glad to see that as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Rich. It was very informative and educational and I, I think this whole series is going to be, yeah, it's, 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 it's really helping, I think, us understand kind of the issues that you face as affordable housing developers and trying to think about how we can partner with you and and, you know, have a better, a better relationship.
Great. Look forward to future endeavors.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So Carrie, you feeling up for level service?
Sure, I am starting to feel a few.
Feel a little woozy?
A little bit, yeah, a little light head. But I will forward John. Actually, it's, it's probably good for me tonight because I did just give this report to council last week, so it's fairly fresh in my mind. So yeah, I'm ready when you are.
So yeah, let's go to the item 60, the annual level service report.
Okay. And so this is our annual level of service report on various city services as well as sort of identifying some of the issues that staff is working on or that we've identified. As noted, this we give this report in April or late April, early May, after our state reporting is done for the various, some of the various components. Others are simply requested by council or part of our report as per, as per our general plan. And so I'm going to jump right in and I will go over as best I can other departments' issues. We certainly have discussions throughout the year with them as well on some of these various topics. So the Sebastopol population has actually decreased last year by about 81 folks. So we're, we're at 7,745 people as of January 1st. I will note this is the Department of Finance estimates at the state level. The US Census actually probably saw a headline recently about the California losing a a seat in the House of Representatives. They are just starting to release some of that data now. The full census data population and statistics is anticipated through this in September of this year or so. And every time this happens, as a planner, you're super excited to get the data and you realize, then you realize you're not going to get it for a year and a half after the census. The, so the first topic is water. And I feel like the governor listened to us last week when we reported that, you know, it's, it's been a really dry year. We are not looking forward to the summer. And of course, to, as some of you may have seen today, the Sonoma County Board Supervisors declared drought as well as the governor doing that for Sonoma and then DeSino Counties last, last week. The we get 100% of our water in Sebastopol from groundwater via a number of wells in the city. Annually, the water production went up 8% last year over 2019. But this is still significantly lower than 2004. A lot of that has to do with a number of the water conservation ordinances both at the local level as well as that have been incorporated into the building code. We also have a landscape low water, water efficient landscape ordinance in effect for certain projects, usually bigger projects. So in this last year, as I was doing that report, Exchange Bank, for instance, is a big enough site, but that was the Hotel Sebastopol will be a big enough site that they're required to incorporate those. Although I think as folks go through our DRB process most I know they made comments about more water appropriate landscapes as well. The concerns, obviously, water conservation as well as contamination issues since we're from wells, if the groundwater gets contaminated, obviously that can get into the groundwater. We are also part of the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And so these are agencies set up for that are required to be set up by the state for groundwater producing areas that meet certain metrics. And so we're, we sort of actually straddle a couple of different planes, but we're mainly in the Santa Rosa Plain. And they have been working on groundwater sustainability plan, I believe it's due to the state in a year or so. But I have had several meetings with their planner to get to work on forecasts based on our general plan and expectations for development and things like that. And so we are working as a regional agency for the, for our groundwater area in terms of making sure that we're sustainable into the future. For wastewater, there was no change last year. And there's the interesting thing about the water increase versus no, no change in water, one thought that came up with the council was, could that possibly be related to a lot of the folks doing at home gardening and farms and raising their own produce since, you know, if you have an increase in water but not wastewater generally, that means you're doing more irrigation. And so possibly due to the dry season, but also possibly due to that. The, for wastewater, we are using 53% of our entitlement, i.e. the capacity in the contract we have with Santa Rosa, which does those sewer treatment for us. So we have quite a bit of capacity there remaining. For drainage, we do require low impact development for stormwater drainage. We have a separate drain, stormwater system. And as you all heard in January, we are proposing a development impact fee related to impervious surface, new impervious surface to help with the impacts to address capacity issues and whatnot for drainage, the drainage system. For parks, we do exceed the city's standard of five acres per 1,000 people. We're at about 5.9 acres per 1,000 people. That does include a recount open space areas of 25%. So the total acres is, it would be more than that, but obviously, when you think about the lagoon and some of the wetlands areas, they're not readily accessible to the entire, entire property because of the nature of those. Recent improvements, as you all know, as our Parks Commission include the, the tennis courts will be resurfaced. They actually are about to be resurfaced. The Dante's and Public Works is waiting for assured enough dry weather that there won't be any concerns without, as they resurface it. The Libby Super Playground opened this year and the Expercanot was paved. We're also looking to bid the AmeriCorps Trail Project for construction this year and the Ives Park renovation plan that we've been working on, both the pathway project as well as the sculpture garden. And for the sculpture garden, I believe they reported last time that that project is moving forward with the calls artists soon. The fire department has a general plan metric of having all calls answered seven minutes or under, and they did meet that metric. In fact, 80% were responded to within six minutes. They did have a number, quite a bit of a reduction in calls, about 1,300 between 2019 and 2020. The fire chief has assessed and reviewed that and you believe most of those are actually related to medical and vehicle related. So with pandemic, a lot less people driving, a lot less accidents. And therefore, fewer calls are related to vehicle injuries. Issues the fire department has been working on include the need for upgrades to some of the capital equipment. Again, there's a new fire impact fee that we'll be presenting to council next week at hearing to address some of those issues. And then additionally, recruitment. They did recently change their volunteer requirements from 21 years to 18 years of age. And they now do allow folks living within the area but outside city limits if they're working in town and nearby. Obviously, being nearby enough as a volunteer response to be able to respond within the appropriate times. Similarly, the police department has a response time metric, which is three minutes for COP4 Priority One calls. They did respond to 70% of Priority One calls within that time. And they had just over 1,000 crime reports that they responded to. Additionally, there were 95 felony arrests in last year. The council asked us to break that down. How much is that as property versus personal versus whatnot? And so we do have a breakdown this year. Of the 95, 25 were property crimes. So vehicle theft and break ins. 33 were personal crimes and 37 were actually warrants, probation related violations, those types of things. Major challenges this year for police, one was COVID, obviously that involved both enforcement and a lot of, we haven't issued citations, but there was a lot of from both the fire department and the police department, a lot of community policing in terms of compliance that they did in terms of talking with business owners, talking with folks on the street, that kind of. They also had, because of quarantine issues, some staffing shortages that they were dealing with. The other, obviously, we had an interim police chief most of last year, Don Moore, who, if you met him, was a wonderful guy. He's still helping the police with a few things. But we now do have a permanent police chief, Kevin Hillbor, who's certainly filled out and he actually, a couple of weeks ago, promoted several officers as part of the work that he's been doing. For schools, school enrollment has basically been flat for both Sebastopol Union as well as the high schools. Historically, in the projections, the, the school enrollment has been on a decline. And as most of you know, the major news item to report on that is that El, Anali and El Malino high schools will be consolidated at the Anali campus this next year. The continuation school students will actually be over at El Malino. So there's a little bit of a change in that. And we'll be working, trying to work with the school districts to address any, any impacts from like traffic or student safety with pedestrians and things like that. For housing, the, there's a couple of different components to work, to report on in terms of the numbers. The first is the growth management ordinance, which allows 50 units, dwelling unit permits to be issued per year at a total of 750 units from 2017 to 2035. And as you can see in the chart in the staff report, we, we did issue 27 permits last year, however, all of them were actually exempt from from the annual 50 unit count. They do count towards the overall 750. But in terms of the annual 50 unit limit, we exempt 80 use of deed restricted affordable units as well as units in the downtown core. And so the breakdown of what we had last year, we did permit eight, 80 use. We had one conversion that was in the downtown core and then we had the 18 unit townhome at the Brown Crossing from where I know is the Davis Townhome project behind the Ed Morris and Sebastopol Avenue. For the RENA numbers, which is a regional housing needs allocation, we're about three quarters of the way through that cycle. It's an eight year cycle. We're under six. Our total requirement is 120 units in the various income categories as of the end of 2020. And so these are based on when a building permit is issued. So even though you or others may approve the entitlement, like say for the townhomes, that was actually approved in 2019, I believe. The, or 20, early 2020. No, sorry, it was 2019. It doesn't count in terms of the state numbers until a building permit is issued. And so we have issued 83 of the 120 units. So we have 38 to go. If we were at 90, we'd be right on target. And in terms of categories, we are a little bit behind, we've met at the moderate, we're a little bit behind on the very low as well as the market rates. Although I will note that the, the Sebastopol Inn project, in terms of what's in our pipeline, we have projects like the Sebastopol Inn, which is 31 units. It's currently being used as COVID vulnerable housing. It, it does not count in those 83 numbers. When they transition to the permanent supportive housing, it will, so they're going to be adding, renovating and adding as actually Richard's talking with the sort of the wet bar kitchenette into the rooms. And it will become permanent supportive housing, not a homeless shelter, but permanent supportive housing for variable income. At that point, that will count towards our RENA progress. And so obviously, if you look at the chart, 31 is more than what we're required to produce for variable income in this timeframe. There is some state legislation to look at the potential for carrying over excess units. And, you know, there are some communities that do have land, but you know, they're, they're sort of stuck and maybe want to produce the housing, but if we've already met that category, do we really need to wait until next, the next cycle? And so they're, they're trying to work with Masseter and Revere's office in terms of you know, we, we want some carrots. We don't want to just be sticks. If people are overproducing beyond their targets, they should be rewarded for that, not penalized because they issued the permits before the next cycle. The the, in terms of the, so I'll stop there on housing and you can look through the, the charts that are in the report as well. For planning, we did about 100 projects, which is pretty typical for us in terms of processing. That doesn't include the special projects of public art, park planning projects, local hazard mitigation plan, those types of things that we've been working with you throughout the year. But of those 100 projects, those are, those are projects that are reviewed by the planning commission, city council, designer review board or, or staff. And then in addition to that, the development impact fee study and the local hazard mitigation plan, the pretty major projects this year. For traffic, I think actually Joe did a pretty good job of highlighting what's on, on the forefront for next year and some of the projects that happened last year. There is a need in terms of both the Bodega project as well as some of the resurfacing to try to find the funding for some of the and as well as for additional crosswalks, as Luke mentioned in his question earlier. And that is identified as an issue that engineering has identified and needs to work on. In terms of environmental, we have a couple of different metrics which are kind of fun and exciting. One is that we have 10, for city buildings, we have 10 facilities that include solar. This last year, they produced 336,155 kilowatt hours, which is a pretty big piece. It was a huge increase from the previous year. And one of the things that Dante noted at council was that because it was about 57,000 the year before. There were actually two systems at Ives Pool and at Public Works that were entirely replaced under warranty. He did note that some of the panels, you know, not all the panels worked well, obviously, but some of the panels did. The company didn't want them boxed, so they're actually looking at putting those together and using those. You know, using those where they can to, for the working panels as well. But that equated to a savings of about 100, over $150,000 for the city, just in terms of electricity costs. So that's a pretty significant effort. Additionally, we issued, the building department for private projects issued 34 foot of permit permits and 21 battery backup systems. They also, I know they also did about a dozen generators as well, standby generators, so fixed, not portable. Obviously, a lot of that is in response to the PSPs as we've been having and we understand that what will happen is probably unforeseeable. Additionally, on sustainability, we have four public locations where there are electrical, electric vehicle chargers. Those are located at Redwood Marketplace, the CVS. And I'll always remind people that the CVS And I'll always remind people that the CVS parking lot, under agreement, is a public parking lot for people to park in as well. And the electric vehicle chargers that are free, so please take advantage of that. And then we have at the public, the parking lot across from the police station, but a cinema as well as the High Street parking lot that's across from some of the arts and ice park. Additionally, as you all know, our zoning code has changed so that we actually require the EV parking as part of new development and for parking lots with ten more spaces. And I think I will stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, anyone have questions about the level of service report?
And thank you, Kathy. She found a, a couple of typos, which we will correct before we post online, so I always appreciate that.
Yeah, on the, maybe that was one of the type was on the tennis court resurfacing, is that supposed to be Brookhaven? Is it Brookside or is that?
Yes, thank you. Brookside and Brookhaven, sorry.
I didn't know if the schools were combined.
No, those schools are not combining. That's, that's Carrie combining the murder head.
Don't want to start any new rumors. And then I think, I didn't hear you cover the traffic section. I thought that was kind of important to kind of discuss. Did I miss that or did you skip that?
I think she did kind of skip that. I had that comment too.
Sure, so. Sure, so is there anything in particular you'd like to know about it? I think a couple of years ago, obviously, we had the major, major effort, I reported last year, on the, the green bicycle lanes that were installed, and the ADA work that was done this year, this last summer, obviously, we also had Caltrans along one sixteen. And specifically in the downtown area, did a number of ADA curb ramp update, upgrades as well. The, we are continuing to look at installing the Hawk or the Rapid Beacon crosswalk signals. So there's definitely been a focus in the engineering department on pedestrian safety and bicycle safety as it relates to traffic. There, I don't have the specific locations where street repaving is happening, although I do know that that report went to council about a month or so ago.
And the, so the, the crosswalk on McKinley, is that tied into the possible, the hotel project? I know that hasn't been upgraded or is there any plans for that, but?
You know, possibly, I think Caltrans is, they were looking at the potential for a mid-block crossing. That would be from the, you know, from the, across Petaluma Avenue, not at McKinley. In, in regards to trying to figure out some of the safety issues around the crosswalk. There's sort of two crosswalks at Screaming Mimi's and a little bit further down. They're very close together, one's right on Highway twelve and the other is from Screaming Green Mimi's to Depot's, the northeast side of Depot Street, where the hotel site is. Those are, you would never design that that way. If, if you were to do that now, they're too close and it causes some safety concerns. They were looking at if they could eliminate one of those with the mid-block crossing, but it looks like they're not going to, Caltrans is not going to be doing that. What they are looking at, yes, is enhancing the, the crosswalk at McKinley instead. But, sorry, McKinley and Petaluma. And obviously, as the hotel was in that cross, I mean, that crosswalk is already, because of the connection between the Barlow and the plaza, especially on weekends, you see that there's just a lot of cross-traffic from pedestrians going back and forth. And so that certainly will help with that, the safety issues there as well as some of the, the north south. Not everyone goes all the way to the, to the mid-block to get across to the Whole Foods Center from the plaza. They, you know, they'll jaylock across, so having a crosswalk at that intersection corner of McKinley and Petaluma will help with the safety there.
Yeah, sometimes a little confusion with all the different, you're coming down from the Barlow versus coming to the street down the police station. People coming out of the parking lot from Whole Foods and then McKinley coming in from the south. It gets a little confusing there sometimes.
Yeah, and it's definitely a balance between, you don't want to create congestion, but you want to give opportunities and safe locations for pedestrians as well.
Thank you.
Kind of somewhat related to that, and I'm sure this is not being discussed because it would be, I think, very difficult to create a crosswalk. But I see so many people crossing from like Community Market to Grabenstein Station. I see people just walking across the street there all the time because it's, it's a pretty long stretch between crosswalks there. You know, I, I'm sure Caltrans is not considering that because I don't know how it really, really fit, but I, I just see, I'm not sure if it's ever been hit, but I see people doing that all the time.
Yeah, no, I, I certainly seen that as well. Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, Caltrans generally wants it to be at an intersection. There was no actual intersection. Although there are certainly a lot of entries to the larger parking lots and the North Especially as well as the Grabenstein Station. I'll note that and not the city engineer, I'll let Joe know, not that comment is a flop.
And so has Joe, is Joe hired as the permanent city engineer? Because I know he's like consulted in the past, but I didn't know.
Right, so Joe is still a consultant contractor at the city, SEO is, he has been for quite a while. We even had Sue Kelly, who I've never met, but spoken on the phone as a resident only, but some of you may have met. He was the city engineer under her as well. And helps with, you know, the more technical aspects. He is stepping into a bigger role since Henry retired. He and also GHD are providing the engine, the coverage for what Henry's position was. And at this point, I, I don't know what the plans are exactly, but in terms, there's no immediate. They did go out and try to recruit for a new engineering manager. Actually, they changed it to a senior civil engineer, I believe, for that, for the engineering department. And they did not have any luck with that search. And so this is an alternative, at least for the time being, that is actually working quite well. GHD has been helping us with the capital improvement plan, budgeting process. And their expertise certainly has been valuable to me in working through some of the park projects and all the improvements that this body often sees.
Any other questions about the level of service report? Go ahead, Luke.
Thank you so much, Carrie, for, for this presentation. I can't believe it's already actually been a year since our last level of service report. And I just want to note that there are, there is Brookside Lane, confusingly between Brookhaven and Parkside. So I don't know if someone put that there just to confuse us down the road or if they were just being cheeky, but anyway. Just wanted to note that. I was curious about the, just, you know, we're in a drought as, as nobody needs to be reminded. I'm, I'm just curious, sort of, the, in, in one of the mitigation points that's mentioned here, there's, just talking about increased water education and, you know, water, water reduction education. I'm just kind of curious how that might be playing out on the city end and if there's anything that can be done kind of on the climate action side that can help facilitate that in this time.
Yeah, so I know Dante has, had developed a number of conservation components. No, so there's several levels. One is the state and the county often have measures, but water districts and so the city of Sebastopol is its own water district, basically. Can set policies as well, obviously, as a city, we can set policies. So Dante is looking at from the last drought, what were those measures? And we'll certainly see more education in the upcoming weeks and months in terms of conservation. There are also potentially policies that the city could look at. You know, communities I've worked in, there have been, you know, certain, certain, well, A, the, the low-impact design for water efficient landscaping, the MLO ordinance that we have. The, the state, I think, in, well, Paul, you probably know this better than I as an architect, but several years ago, they implemented requirements. And actually, I don't think it was even the building code. I think it was just legislature that if you did certain home improvements, you automatically had to upgrade your faucets and your toilets and, and those types of things. So to be low-floor heads and, and low-floor toilets, the state has done a number of rebates that, for the public in the past on low-floor toilets and things like that, to try to just get those bigger, you know, those bigger items. But going from a one-point-six gallon to a point eight or a point-six gallon toilet is actually, you know, if you think about how many times you go to the bathroom a year, that's a lot of gallons of water that you could save. The, other policies that I've seen, I have seen communities have requirements for things like pools to have covers. That's a pretty standard one. I don't think we have that here. We have that here. That just helps from an evaporation standpoint. In some places, I've seen pool moratoriums when you're in this type of climate. I did mention that to council. I don't, I don't know what kind of reaction they were, they got. It wasn't discussed at the time, but you know, there, there are certainly, you know, components like that. We have, we have a community pool, so you have all those types of things that are, and you know, from a design B perspective, even if I've been in communities where lawn areas are limited, in a lot of that have to do with water use and wanting to make sure that you could have five hundred square feet of lawns, you could have enough to play for kids to play, but not the massive, and frankly, not my, Sebastopol doesn't have huge expanses of turf at most homes anyway. It's more modest. But certainly, those are, those are some of the efforts that I've seen other communities do as moms.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I do a follow-up question about water?
Certainly, go ahead.
I'm, I'm wondering if we have heard as a city, any complaints from our neighboring residents and properties outside the city limits about their wells have had to be deepened. I know that was a concern years ago. And, you know, making, you know, as a city, even though we have a right to pump the water, but also we want to be good stewards, you know, to our well-dependent neighbors. So I'm wondering, have you, are you aware of any complaints since it seems like this drought is, just seems like it's even going to be worse?
That's an excellent question, Linda. I do not, but I'm actually just writing an email of follow-up notes and I'm adding that as a question for Dante and the city managers, see if we have gotten any complaints regarding that. So I think that's, that would be a good metric to understand, you know, are people having to drill their wells even deeper? Or are they having problems with wells going dry?
Yeah, I know that the city, you know, eventually did join a little bit more of the groundwater studies that were a little bit of a different aquifer, but and, and I don't know if that, all of those questions to the property owners, you know, I mean, there's a lot of reluctance to talk about how much water you have available when you're a well, a well person, but all the rules are changing with groundwater pumping and, you know, responsibility. Mendocino is in the middle of it as well. So they're a little behind us, but I just, I'm, I'm also, so then I'll just follow up is, do we have enough water? How are we doing with that? I know I read the, I read your synopsis, but are, are we in any danger?
So we aren't in danger of our wells drying up. However, there is certainly a concern expressed by both myself and Dante. And like, like I said, this was before in the state declaration of Stoner County, it's a drought area. And so we see the writing on the wall and it's part of our jobs is to, to look forward. There is a need to conserve so that we don't get to that place where there are issues. Sebastopol, you know, hasn't ever been in a position like I know of where there's wells running dry. We do have one well that was shut down several years ago because of contamination. And so I think that is a, you know, there's, there's, there's the water quality as well that you're able to pump. And so certainly, that was a big hit to the city. To have to shut a well because of contamination. And so we want to certainly protect our existing wells and the groundwater quality in terms of contamination, because that would certainly create issues. But in terms of the actual our groundwater levels, there are actually significant issues at this time. Again, that's part of, as you noted, under the the Groundwater Sustainability Act, the whole point of that is to make sure that communities are planning for the long-term health of their, of their reservoirs. And, and I'll say what I said at the, the other night, you know, if you have that glass of water or bowl of water that you, you know, defrosted something in, go put it on your plants. If it's your water from, you know, the night before, put it in your dog's bowl. I promise they won't care. You know, all those little things that you think about, you know, do I really need to put this water down the drain or do I have any use for it? That would be a reuse. That's certainly the ethos of our community and I think encouraging that to friends and neighbors will certainly be part of this summer.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to take up your time on water, but it's really relevant right now. Mendocino County today is looking at whether they want to require, you know, water deliveries out to projects that really should have never been developed because they didn't have a dedicated water source. This is around the cannabis, but then now they're looking at, is that true for vineyards? But then it's a drought year, so what's the emergency? And I know that we do sell water and I'm wondering if there's any issues that, you know, I don't think the county has taken up this quite yet about, you know, should the water be delivered? You have to, at Mendocino County, you have to identify a reliable source to be able to have water delivered. Now the rules are going to change. And then there's a whole discussion, should water deliver businesses or the trucks delivered to non, to illegal agricultural? And so it's, it's, it's a huge issue, but I know that we sell water, so, you know, we, you know, just, and we don't require that they show us that they're delivering to, you know, legal or whatever or non-legal. So, but is there any issues around us selling water? And how is that prioritized if we all have to spare, you know, try and save water, but we're also selling it, so?
Right, right. Another excellent question. I do know there was some discussion about limiting outside service contracts. So occasionally, and this isn't quite what you're, the, no, what you're asking. I think you're talking a lot more about the bigger deliveries outside of city limits, and I can certainly ask Dante about that. I do know there was some discussion about the outside service area agreements. Now, we do have a few of those. Generally, they're in our sphere of influence. So people who are having well issues within the sphere of influence can ask for an outside service agreement to get water. Or water and sewer if they, if they want to. Most, most of the time it's water because water's under pressure and you can get it to workplaces more easily. I know we did approve, I think, one or two of those. I think it was just one, actually, in this last year over in Robinson Road area, part of town, sphere of influence. There was an additional other service area request, not in our sphere of influence, and the city council did deny that last year. And it seemed like they just wanted to be able to build a bigger house and And it, it seemed like they just wanted to be able to build a bigger house and so that was, you know, it wasn't seen as a, it's a, it, there wasn't a health need or a health or safety need for that. So even though it was adjacent to city boundaries, they, the council opted to not approve that through the policy. And I Okay, thank you very much. I'll probably be a little bit more cautious about that as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? All right, shall I ask, looks like, do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak, have any comments on the level of service? Any chats?
I'm not seeing any chats and I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, then I will close the public comments. And see, move on to subcommittee updates. Do you have any subcommittee updates? To report? Kathy or Luke, any updates?
No, the the Ice Park Subcommittee will be presenting at the Public Arts Committee. I guess it's coming up next week and I do have revised documents to give you, Carrie, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Kathy.
And I have no updates on the Climate Action Committee. I was not able to attend the last meeting, so still need to review that. But there is another meeting tomorrow, so I'll have more updates next time.
All right, thank you. Item eight is a planning director's report.
All right, I'll be pretty brief on this one, but a few items to note. The last city council meeting, obviously, we gave a level of service report. And we'll say, I think you guys asked other questions. Don't tell them that. A lot more in-depth questions, though. I do appreciate that. And actually, you know, frankly, when I don't know the answer, I see that as an opportunity for me to learn more about the city too, so I do appreciate those. They also heard a housing law presentation, very similar to what the Planning Commission DRV joint session a year ago thereabouts was. But that's available online on the city's website if anyone wants to refresh on that. They also approved the proposed site for the Ned Con sculpture. And that's, the approved site is northwest of the Highway 12 Bridge. It's about 100, so if you know where the Welcome Las Vegas sign is west of the bridge. And then there's sort of that meadow going north. It's about 120 or so feet, 150 feet north of the Welcome sign. And it will be with the America Trail will be going right past it when that's constructed and Ned is proposing and likely to try to get some contributions for benches and other things to be near it so that people can sit and enjoy it. And so that was unanimously approved. The next city council meeting come up and coming up a few items of interest. We will have the annual peaceful nominees. They did not do that last year due to COVID, but they're picking that up again and have I believe four great nominees that are going to be asking councils to approve. We will have authorization for their housing element, RFP. And so that's next Tuesday and then so we're going to get approval for that, we'll issue it Wednesday and it'll be open for about a month. So that we will get started on that soon and obviously that will be a big work project for the planning commission this next year. The, there's two public hearings on the next council agenda. One is a firework span. With the fire chief is bringing forward at council's request and the other is the development impact fee ordinance. This body heard at their second meeting in January and recommended to the council. And then upcoming, there will be a couple of items on the May 18th agenda. That's tentative at this point, but it looks like a couple of those items of interest, one of them will be the, the outside city limits planning commission position, what that geography looks like, the best staff to work on that and want to review that, so we'll be bringing that back to them most likely at the May 18th meeting. And so the in terms of the development impact fee, I don't know if there's a liaison who'd be interested in going to that meeting. I believe Linda is the liaison, but she's not able to make the meeting, if I recall, from prior conversations with Linda. And if anyone is interested in being that liaison, then you could let me now know, know now. Or via email as well. And I think that's it for my planning director report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right.
Well, actually, I do have one more thing to add, actually. The, one of the other items on the city council agenda that they approved last week was to reopen a few positions, vacant positions to fill for the Climate Action Committee. That will be posted on our website tomorrow. It includes a second youth member as well as a couple of other members. So if you know folks who are in, who might be interested in that, actually, just let me I can let you know what those categories are right now. So that way if you if you know anyone who's interested in applying, definitely have them, they can contact myself or Rebecca at the city. And that includes as I said, the second youth alternative member, a Sebastopol business owner and someone with an interested environmental justice equity background.
Hi, Luke.
I just wanted to check, is the other seat on the planning commission open and still actively recruiting?
Yes, it is, thank you. And it does look like we'll also have a designer reboard vacancy. Someone has, Ron Harry has resigned. And so that'll be going to council next Tuesday and then, so that position isn't open for applications yet. But again, if you know folks who might be interested, that's actually the general public member seat, so it does not need to be a licensed architect or contractor or license contractor. But yes, thank you, Luke. The planning commission vacant position is open and accepting applications.
When is the application period closed for that?
Oh goodness. I would have to look that up, but I'm happy to send that to you via email so that you know the depth.
Just curious.
I apologize. Usually it's open for about six weeks, so I think there's a couple more weeks left. And if, also, if we don't get any applications within that, it's automatically extended for two additional weeks.
Right. Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much. I hope you are feeling okay, Carrie, and make it to the next 24 hours or so.
For those of you who don't know, I got a shot today. Good deal, but I'm starting to feel the effects, so.
And I just want to let everyone know, I just, I just checked the flyer and the planning commission vacancy closes May 27th.
Great, thank you. So, so definitely, if you know folks who would be interested in, in the position, good for, encourage them. If they want to just talk about what it all involves, and I'm happy to talk to them, although obviously you all have more to say from your perspective.
Hi, Kathy.
I, I just checked my calendar and it looks like I'm the alternate in May for the liaison to the city councils. At least that's what's in my book.
Oh, great, okay.
So I'll pay attention.
Great, thank you, Kathy.
I just have a question. Where did we end up with the early start discussion? Did we come to a conclusion with that?
So we did come to a conclusion that we would do it, but if but after the housing presentation, since they've already been advertised to a lot of folks in the community. That would be starting, we have presentations in May, so we'll be starting with the June, the first meeting in June.
Okay.
And thank you for reminding me. That was almost of things I needed to address tonight.
All right, then with that, I will adjourn us to the May 11th meeting. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Night.